...of the Blackman's Parish School Board for July 9th at Boothville Venice Elementary. The pledge will be said by Mr. Mertz and the invocation by Reverend Giles.
Let us bow. Dear God, as always, we thank you for another blessed day, another blessed hour. We thank you for health and strength, and we thank you, Lord God, for allowing us to assemble on this day. Now, Lord God, direct our mind as we come tonight to do the things you have ordained for us to do. As always, we thank you for traveling grace. We thank you for those who have taken time out of their busy schedule to be here tonight. Now, Lord God, let everything be done tonight in decency and in order, and as always, we will give your name the praise, honor, and glory which is so rightfully those. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Well, the regents of the flag in the United States of America, and it's a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and ever being just as one.
Mr. Superintendent, roll call, please.
Michael Giles.
Here.
Nancy Lahey. Anthony St. Philip.
Here.
Joyce Lampkin.
Here.
Fran Martinez.
Here.
Carlton LaFrance.
Here.
Paul LaMaire.
Here.
Chuck Swallow.
Here.
William Mertz.
Here.
Mr. President, chair of the forum.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Item 1.04, approval of the agenda.
So offered with the addenda, second.
Got a motion offered by Mr. LaMaire, seconded by Mr. Mertz. Any question? Any discussion? The motion passes unanimously. Item 1.05, ad hoc and standing committee reports. We have, does anybody have any? I think Nancy was the only one, but we have two that I'll be reading this evening. The first is from the executive committee meeting. It was held at Blackman's Parish School Board Office on Tuesday, June 11th, 2013. Attendees: Anthony St. Philip, Fran Martinez, Nancy Lahey, and Dennis Rousseau. The meeting was called to order at 4:10 PM. The executive committee reviewed and discussed revisions to board policies. The policies are A-B-C-D-A, unexpired term fulfillment, A-E, school year, B-B-B-C, board members continuing education, E-G-A-A, workman's comp, I-D, curriculum, I-D-C-A, summer school, I-D-C-C, kindergarten, I-D-E, co-curriculum and extracurricular activities, I-D-G, adult education, J-B, attendance, J-B-C-F, unsafe school choice, J-D-D, suspension, J-G-C, student health services, J-G-C-D, administration of medication, J-R, student records. And new policies, I-H, academic achievement, and I-H-G, credit recovery. The revisions are due to legislative updates. The committee will recommend adoption of these new policies and revised policies by the board. Arrangement was at 5:00 PM. The other meeting was the committee of the board. The meeting was held on July 2nd, 2013, at the Belchase School Board Office. Anthony St. Philip, chairperson, called the meeting to order at 3:38 PM. Members in attendance were Nancy Lahey, Anthony St. Philip, Joyce Lampkin, Fran Martinez, Paul LaMaire, Chuck Swallow. Absent was Michael Giles, Carlton LaFrance, and William Mertz. Item 2, presentation of facility assessment reports of Belchase High and Belchase Middle Schools by Leon Barkin and Philip Russell of Volkerd Incorporated. The gist of the presentation is as follows. "Belchase High School: Alternative 1. Renovation of existing facility. Addition of career tech wing and addition of a new competition gym. Alternative 2. Construction of a new facility on a greenfield site, approximately 40 acres. Career tech addition, which is ROTC classroom offices, arms, uniform storage, medical academy classroom, lab and office, general lab classroom, shop office, culinary arts kitchen, classroom, dining lab office, process technology classroom, lab office, competition gym, which is approximately 25,000 square feet, 1,500-seat capacity, additional locker facilities. Alternative 1. Total estimated program cost $20,905,703. Alternative 2. Plus or minus 209,000 square feet. Main facility to house 1,000 students. Greater than eight each in the core classroom. Greater than, well, these are just accents, four each, science labs, ROTC, arts, facts, general labs, three each, business ed, process tech, health, medical academy, culinary arts, driver's ed, ISS, band, choir, three each, special ed, 1,500-seat competition gym, practice gym. New school estimate $53,329,739. Does not include land acquisition. Belchase Middle School: 18,000-square-foot gym with locker rooms, 2,000-square-foot cafeteria addition, 1,500-square-foot band room addition, 900-square-foot art room addition, renovations to plus or minus 55,000 square feet of existing. Rubberized track and field events on existing field. Total estimated program cost $9,596,769." Information items were discussed, and the meeting was adjourned at 4:37 PM. Okay. Item 1, item 2.01, presentation of the Blackman's Parish presentations and/or recognition.
Ag Center 4-H, 2013 Parish Profile Report. Ms. Jan Morgan. Is Jan here? She's not here, so we'll delete that. Go on to the next one.
Item 3.01, board members' time for non-agenda and agenda items. 3.01 is executive session pursuant to revised statute 42,6.1A, two, strategies and negotiations.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
I'll second.
A motion offered by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Mr. Mertz. Any question? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Second.
A motion offered by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Mr. LaMaire. Any question? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. There were no decisions made in executive session.
Mr. President, I would like to move that we raise the superintendent's salary to the sum of $20,000 per year. Our performance as a school system has been excellent over the last few years, and I believe his position, he is deserving of such a raise. I so offer.
I'll second.
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. Lampkin. Any question?
I had a question.
Mr. LaFrance?
You deserve his.
That's up to the board.
Any other questions? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Item 3.02, discussion and appropriate action in regard to approval of, sorry?
Are you going to bend the law?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Back it up. Okay. We're going to back up to board members' time for non-agenda and agenda items.
Oh, yeah.
Want to thank Ms. Prow for hospitality, and want to thank everybody for showing out tonight. We're getting pretty close. We're halfway through with the summer. Pretty soon, before you know it, the new school year is going to begin, and we'll be back in the grind. Many of us haven't missed a beat yet. We've been working through. But it's been a good summer. It's been a hot summer, and God willing, we'll get through this hurricane season with no hurricanes. Does anybody have anything else to say?
I would just like for all of us to keep Ms. Jones' family in our prayers. Last week, she lost her sister. Her sister used to be an employee of ours, Ms. Jackie Rowley, and I called her this week and offered my sympathies. But again, just keep Ms. Jones and her family in our prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaFrance. Item 3.02, discussion and appropriate action in regard to approval of new and revised board policies. Waive the second reading. These are the same policies, well, have a motion offered.
I'll so offer. Second.
I didn't catch that. Offered by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Mr. Mertz. The reason why I read those out earlier in the minutes was so I wouldn't have to read them again now. So, any question? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. Item 3.03, discussion and appropriate action in regard to rescinding approval of revisions to policy G-B-R-I, approved at the April 8th, 2013 board meeting, and approving revisions to G-B-R-B.
I'll so offer.
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. Martinez. Any question? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. Item 3.04 has been deferred. Item 4, superintendent's comments and reports.
Discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of the five-salary schedule.
Policy for teachers and other certified school personnel for 2012, 13, 2014. Mr. White.
So offered for discussion.
Second for discussion.
Motion offered by Mr. LaMaire, seconded by Mr. Mertz.
Good evening. When we passed the new salary schedule back in March, we did it at that time in order to comply with the Act 1 law that was passed by the legislature last year and to meet their April 1st deadline for submission to them to be sure that our salary schedule complied with the law. And so, we had that passed. We made that submission, received word back from the State Department of Education that our salary schedule did comply with the law. But at the time we did it, we said that we were going to have to study it a little bit further, make sure that there weren't any things that we needed to tweak or change. And if there were any of those things, we'd come back to the board. After probably about a month of discussion within the administration, we found three things that I'm proposing to the board that we change and correct. The first thing is very minor. It was just a mathematical error on the teacher's salary schedule. For step zero, the dollar amounts were understated by $300. So I corrected that. Steps 1 through 25 are correct as they originally were passed by the board. The second thing is that in order to leave us some flexibility from an administrative standpoint and to make things a little bit easier on our end, we would like to remove the salary schedules for all of the other positions that were included, that the board had passed, for all other certified school personnel, and replace those salary schedules with the formulas that we are currently using and that we have been using for all of those positions. I was hoping to make things easier by having a salary schedule for each of those positions, but it turns out it's probably just easier to not have an actual schedule, but just to follow the same formula based on the teacher's salary schedule, which is what we are currently doing and have been doing, which means that principal's pay is still 1.4 of a teacher's pay, assistant principal is still 1.25 of a teacher's pay, and all of the other positions are paid on a per diem rate based on the days that they actually work during a year. And then the third thing that we propose to the board that we change is that the effectiveness stipend, which is part of the formula that is required by the law, the original plan was to have that paid to the teachers and the other certified school personnel evenly throughout the year. What we would like to do is change that so that the teachers and the other certified school personnel who receive this stipend will just receive it as a one-time stipend at or near the end of the year based on the effectiveness rating they receive in June. And that would be effective for the 2013-14 school year, which means that they would receive this stipend around the end of June 2014, and it would be effective for the 2013-14 school year. So those are the three changes we're proposing. Basically, nobody's pay is being changed that had been changed earlier back in March.
The stipend is based on the evaluations?
Correct. It's based on the law. I know that some of the other administrators could tell you for sure, explain it better than me, but I think it's basically the compass rating that the...
It's a combination of their BAM scores, if they were a BAM teacher, they're not, it was their SLTs, and their evaluations. And we just put the figures in, and the State Department's computer program computes the rating for us, and then they incent them based on those ratings.
And we come back with four possible ratings. So when it comes back to the finance side, everybody's got one of the four possible ratings, and so two of them get paid the stipend, the other two do not. I think that's the summary of the changes involved.
Mr. President, I'll move that we accept the changes in the salary schedule as outlined by Mr. White.
I'll second that.
I have a motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Mr. LaMaire. Any question? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. We, I was given, if y'all would pass those calendars back, I'm confusing everybody with this. This is a package, it's not a calendar. Sorry about that. Let's see, we are on item 4.03. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rousseau. Yeah.
Discussion and appropriate action in regard to approval of the lowest bidder for custodial chemicals and supplies for 2013-2014. Mr. White.
I'll so offer.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Mrs. Martinez.
Included in the board packet is a list of the custodial items that we purchased, and this is, we put all these things out for bid for a two-year period, and the light yellow highlighted items are the lowest prices for each of the various vendors who responded to our bid. Now, I'd be glad to entertain any questions regarding...
You smiling because I have a question?
Mrs. Luca and I had a discussion this morning to be sure that I had a complete understanding of some of the concerns that have been expressed in the past.
In the past, yeah. And I'm not going to bring up those concern again. I'm just saying it's kind of ironic. We put out for bid, looks like we got three or four, we got four respondents on here. Two of them, you know, mostly items, about 50% each. We have one of them that is just for two items, some drinking cups. And, you know, looking at their price differences versus the other ones, okay, I know what the state law says we should do. I just think it's kind of...
I asked Mr. Luca if there was some way we could either streamline this or simplify it, but the fact is that we've got all these items already in the computer like this, so it's not like we're having to reinvent the wheel each year. We just put it out, basically, since it's saved in the computer, just put it out there. These are people that we enjoy doing business with, and as long as we ensure that they have the lowest prices for the individual products, we kind of prefer buying certain things in terms of quality from certain people and other things from other people. I asked her if there was a way to simplify it in terms of going through a state contract, but the state contract doesn't provide for all the items, and these particular vendors will not sell all, no one vendor sells all the items, so we can't just go straight through one vendor. So she assured me that as much as she would like to simplify it if it was possible to and still comply with the law, there was really no way to simplify it.
I know a lot of work goes into this every time we do it, and I do appreciate it. I just got to looking at it, you know, okay. Of all the items they put in for, which is very few, about 30% of it, they're lowest on two items, so. But, Mr. President, I will definitely move to accept the lowest bidders on the items.
I have a motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. Martinez. Any questions? Any opposition? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of schoolwork calendars for employees.
Can we get somebody to offer their motion, please?
I'll so, I'll second.
Motion offered by Ms. Lampkin, seconded by Mr. Mertz.
Any questions?
Well, it's not pulling up directly on this, but I notice it seems like some of the same positions in different schools are a different number of days. I just want a little clarification on that.
Curriculum specialists and counselors. Curriculum specialists, a couple of years ago, we were approached by some of the curriculum specialists about reducing their days from 11-month to, is it 10-month? One of the reasons is they, school's starting earlier and earlier, and that gives them less and less time off. Another reason is much of their work is done with the teachers, and if the teachers aren't there, it kind of restricts the work that they can do. So with the raise coming into play for the 2013-14 school year, they could reduce their salary, they could reduce their days, but it wouldn't reduce, they wouldn't have a lesser take-home pay because of the raise. And the few that it would affect, it would be $50 to $60 a month. So they, we were, they, we approached them, and they decided they wanted to work less days, especially since their work was halted because the teachers weren't there. So that is why those days were reduced. Now with counselors, it's a little bit different story. Before my tenure as Director of Secondary Ed, Ms. Roberts added days to the counselor's schedule. So Ms. Betholome, Marquesha Betholome, is considered the supervisor for counselors. So we came together and we talked about whether we could reduce their days because, so they would have more time off during the summer. And she felt that, yes, we could. So then we went to each counselor, except Ms. Mills, who was on maternity leave, and asked them if they were interested in reducing their days. At Belchase Primary, they felt that they could not get their work done in a 10-day reduction, but that they were willing to go to a five-day reduction. So that's what they agreed to. Ms. Cook did not want her days reduced. She felt she's got, she's got, this is her last year, she will retire. She felt like if we wanted to change the days, we'd wait till the new counselor came on board. We still have not contacted Ms. Mills. But it's always been the policy that elementary counselors have less days than high school counselors because of the scheduling. Their, how to schedule kids is not as involved as high school. So I think that may explain some of the discrepancy in the days.
Any other question? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of revisions to job descriptions. Ms. Couson.
State law...
I'll so offer.
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Mr. Swallow.
State law required the students to have a set number of days of attendance and the teachers to have a set number of days of attendance. This past year, in Bulletin 741, Bessie changed that policy to where it's not days, but you have to meet instructional minutes. And depending upon how many days you need to meet those instructional minutes, that's how many days the teachers have to work. In the past, it's fluctuated. We used to have either 182, 180. Well, this year, we were able to get our instructional minutes in 181. So rather than state a specific number in the job descriptions that they would work, we would like to put a generic statement to the effect that they will follow the school calendar. Because as long as we're following instructional minutes, depending upon, like last year, we had Election Day, so we had to work more days because Bessie had declared that a holiday. So it's just to avoid every year having to redo the job descriptions just to get the
Any opposition? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Monthly head start budget, Mr. White.
Ms. Mummy's out of town, so...
Mummy's in the mountains. Climbing mountains.
So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer. I actually have a copy of the budget with me.
Any questions?
Proper with all again.
There's no questions. Thank you. Appreciate the help.
Discussion appropriate action in regard to the approval of alternate number two for the Boothville Venice Elementary School roof replacement project to provide an odorless adhesive membrane.
So offer.
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Mr. Swallow.
When the board approved the contract with Roof Technologies to redo the roof here at Boothville Venice Elementary, one of the alternates, which was alternate number two, was to provide for an odorless membrane that we thought would be a good idea to do it, to put that on. But my thinking at the time was twofold. One was that we could just wait and see if we actually thought we needed to do it that way for the good of the children, or if, in fact, we could get it done quick enough that it really wouldn't affect the students. The second thing was whether or not FEMA would cover it. I've been notified, and this has just happened the last 24 hours or so, that the contractor really needs to know for sure whether or not we're going to go with alternate two, but it, as a little bit of a bonus, they said that they would be glad to do it for half the price. So at this point, what was originally going to cost us about $74,000 has now been reduced down to $37,213. Consulting with the architect, he thinks that it would be a good idea to do it. It's his recommendation that we should go ahead and go with it, because even if we were to get done before the children were to come back to school, they would be a residual effect, reliable to get complaints and everything. So he recommends that we go ahead and do it. As far as paying for it, we're going to do our best to have FEMA pay for this, but considering that it's only half as much as originally going to be, I think that the general fund should pay for it, even if FEMA doesn't pay for it, just for the sake of the children at the school. So I'd ask that we go ahead and go with alternate number two for the price of $37,213.
Any question?
Is the material just as good?
I'm sorry?
Is the material just as good?
That's what I've been told, yes, sir. That the only difference is it costs a little bit more because either the membrane itself or the process that's used to apply it is odorless compared to, I suppose, the other method which smells bad.
Any other question? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of proposed changes to the 2013 board meeting rotation schedule.
So offer.
Second.
I have a motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Ms. Martinez.
Do you understand the reasoning?
About going to Belchase and...
With Belchase Primary, we'll only have the one meeting they had already.
And we'll have one at the Learning Center.
And we're going to do the Learning Center, which y'all had requested.
Okay.
Looks like the September meeting will be at our new high school.
Maybe October.
No, that's, Belchase High wants October. That's the one that we're changing so they can show off their culinary arts program.
And we'll see about the other ones when we're in there.
Any other questions? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Approval of board consent agenda?
So offer.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Mertz, seconded by Mr. LaFrance. Any question? Any oppose? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. Information items.
I would like to say that the parish is moving all the records out of the Woodlawn Building, and there are two trailers that we're going to have to move that belong to the disaster recovery, which will be easy to do. So we're ready to move on that project on the East Bank.
Thank you. Item 7, Citizens' Comments. Item 8, Date, Time, and Location of the Next Meeting. August 5th, 2013, at Belchase High School at 6:00 PM. That's the Learning Center, I'm sorry. Okay. It's going to be August 5th, 2013, at the Learning Center in Port Salfer at 6:00 PM. Okay, just a quick note before we do adjourn. We have been approved for our redistricting plan, so we are in sync with the parish, and we all have the same districts. Right, the precincts will be, have yet to be determined. We'll get those shortly, as I understand. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So offer.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Mr. Mertz. Any oppose? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.